Okay, I'd like to bring the June 20th meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is a public hearing relating to proposal of law number thirteen of twenty twenty three to amend chapter eleven article seven of the administrative code as it's related to parking regulations and authority thereof in the city of Portland. Anybody here to speak that I think we had somebody people signed up, all right, science thing, make your kind, your sign first again.
Hello, everyone. I represent the Hollywood and also many of my customers that come in and I actually have seven pages of a petition that we have all decided to sign because we feel that the parking changes and paid parking is not good for Portland. We really feel as though it doesn't provide the citizens of Portland what they need. Paid parking is going to be a disaster for downtown and also for my business and anybody else who owns a business downtown. It will discourage people from coming downtown if they have to pay park. And I know there are some allowances maybe a two hour window, but there's many older people in Portland that have no idea what an app is, how to put it on their phone, don't have a cellphone. So those are my big concerns as far as paid for parking. I don't think Portland's ready for it yet. During the summertime where the college students are no longer here, all the parking problems go away. The issue with parking is the student and downtown buildings that have been created with students also that are living in those buildings. And everyone has cars. There are students from North, like North Heights, you know, all around that come and use the parking lots. The Hollywood, I'll call it Hollywood parking lot, just because it's been called that for so many years. That has the largest majority of parking spaces taken out. In the very center is twenty eight spaces. When I made my complaints, I received fourteen more spaces added to that parking lot. And those spaces, those cars never have to move. They're there year round, twenty four hours through every snowstorm. Nothing gets cleared and we all know what a disaster that parking lot can be, you know, when it's winter time. The real issue is student parking and finding places for them to park. If you did put pay parking and I had to buy parking places for all my employees, even if I bought twelve at thirty dollars, that would be three sixty a month, which would turn into four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a year. Now, there's many other parking lots in the city of Portland. If you look around, you will find most of those spaces are not evenly taken out. The distribution of parking is incorrect in the city of Portland. So paid parking will not be a good solution. So I'm asking that it gets looked at a little more clearer and a little more fairly for the citizens of Portland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, I have Ms. Corbin.
I'm Carol Costello Corbin. I'm a city resident. I've also worked for the New York State Assembly in Assemblymember Anna Kellis's office. I started in that position in January of twenty twenty three and the office is located in the Chamber of Commerce building. So right downtown, right on Main Street. I work full time, Monday through Friday, nine to five. When I started the position, I immediately got a parking ticket because the permit that I got handed to me that got passed down was already expired. So of course, you know, I'm a working for an elected official. I want to remedy that immediately. I go to the city clerk and have been told that all of the parking permits have been sold out and I can't purchase one. Would I like to buy an odd or an even day pass? No, I have to work every day. So right now, there, there's no legal way that I can park full time and work on Main Street. And the office has been generous as far as accommodating a, a ticket that I got understanding that situation. But there needs to be a way that folks who work full time downtown can park and have access to working permits. For that reason, I sometimes work in the Ithaca office, drive to Ithaca. I park on the street and pay for parking and can work all day. It's a, it's a cost. I understand that. My coworker who comes from the Ithaca office to come work for the, at the Portland office can't do that. There's only three hours. So when she needs to come to Portland and work for a full day, there's really no way to pay and legally park in a, like a public lot for the entire day because it's three hour parking. So whether or not, I mean, it's not really realistic to have folks who work move their car every three hours. So I have not thoroughly reviewed the proposal, but we really need accommodations for folks who work full time and need access to parking on the street and in the public lots and have some flexibility for folks who need beyond just a three hour window of, of parking for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else that would like to speak to related to the proposal on number thirteen twenty twenty three to amend chapter eleven article seven of the administrative code as it relates to parking regulations and authority thereof in the city of Portland. Last call relating to the proposed local law number thirteen of twenty twenty three amend chapter eleven article seven of the administrative code as it relates to parking regulations and authority thereof for the city of Portland. Well, we appreciate your comments and certainly when we talk about it later, I think you're both recognized that both of those items that we're talking about are to, are resolved in this portion. So we'll make sure we get that clear at that point. So call, call the word please.
Councilmember Scott, present. Councilmember Silman.
Present.
Councilmember Pennell.
Present.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Eric.
Councilmember Carpenter here. Councilmember Backwood, present. Councilmember Michael's reported as.
All right, we can all rise to the seat.
Public for which stands the nation and again. Just.
Make sure to get muted. Derek, I'm gonna make sure he gets muted. Okay. A moment of reflection, if we could get a moment to recognize the good hard work that we, that was in discussions that were had during the Juneteenth. And again, that open minds and open hearts come together for a good reconciliation for all of us. Thank you. All right, quickly to the floor. We have a couple items going on. First, I'd like to invite the fire chief up. It's Mr. Caden Brown. Who is a intern that's for the spring semester and the senior. I think it wouldn't be a senior, is a senior, right, for the next year, going into next year.
So as I was told today, he was started as a junior today, finished his junior year today and becomes a senior today. So next year he will be a senior. So yes, this is Caden Brown. Wanted to bring to the council that Caden came on board with the fire department here and collaborated an effort with Portland High School as an intern. He had an internship with us from January to the end of the school year. Caden spent an hour and a half every day at the fire station with all the shifts as well as the code office. You're going through and observing and being part of the, the work at the fire station. He was able to observe all the functions of that and the intent was, as an internship is, is to gain knowledge of the service, what we do and all the aspects that are involved. So he did this for his semester and was recognized and they had a ceremony. All the interns that they had up to high school here a couple of weeks ago, but Caden came on board, was very successful and learned a lot of the other stuff that we do and has expressed an interest and we're working on the collaboration for other students as well as him to come back as a senior student in the fall. And I have an idea that his desires after this time with us is to fulfill his desire to be a firefighter for his career. So that's kind of the, the intent behind that. But I wanted to share that with the council, the, the collaboration effort we have in the high school and hopefully we can start some of our youth, bring them up through and do that. He also, he's a volunteer firefighter. He lives in Virgil and he's been through some very basic firefighters training. There's a volunteer there, so long as Dad's a fire chief, so that helps too, I guess. Our game is here and I wanted to introduce him and acknowledge his participation and all that with the council. So that's.
I have a question for Caden. Step up there, young man. What was the favorite part of your internship?
Meeting all people, all the people on the shift, meeting and all of them. Yes, I like that, even understanding. It's fun to do, fun job, I guess.
Okay, great.
Very good.
Thank you.
I don't know if Wayne's taught you one thing that's very important in the fire department is community service, which we know Wayne has done just previously and then busted his butt while he did the whole thing, but one thing you're gonna learn in any paid profession or volunteer profession, and I was in the Homer Fire Department for thirty years. Lot of community service out there. So don't be afraid to go for that while you're still in school because it'll help you in the long run.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you excited to see in the future? For sure.
Yeah.
One other item that's not listed, we have two members of the fire department that need to be sworn as fire police officers. Dave Tanner, who recently completed the, and Dave's been with the fire department for a very long time and has come back in and recognized he has time, has gone on and got his fire police training and now he needs to be sworn in for that, Assistant Chief Fairbanks as well. So this typically happens in January. We're just getting around to doing this stuff. So the mayor's gonna swear him in. So I'll call them up and they can get sworn in and sign the book.
Tanner and I have shared many different jobs together, but we just stepped over there. You're both raise your right hand. I state your name. Sal, me swear. That I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. The Constitution of the State of New York. That I fully discharge my duty. Fire police officer. A fire police officer. According to that, my, my, my abilities. Now, Police Chief Sandy, you wanna come up? Unfortunately, Chief Regens, winter and last, I'd like to invite him to come do a couple riding rides. Thank you for the opportunity. Every quarter of the police department has a committee that meets on awards and recognitions, which are submitted by different members of the department, most likely, you know, sergeants. And we review them decide on, on what awards to give. The first award I'm gonna do is, is a commendation which comes from the center. And I did invite Officer Heinz, Chad Heinz, to step up here. On December sixteenth at approximately one oh five PM, officers of the state agency responded to one oh nine Main Street. Portland for reported shooting in apartment three. The scene was secured immediately and it was believed the suspect was hiding in an apartment across the hall from the shooting. Although you had taken the day off or home with family, you heard the situation and responded to the scene. Taking control of the tactical operations at the center. As team leader of the tactical response unit, you follow a chain of command and began acquisition resources and manpower to aid the volatile situation. Officer safety was a priority. Therefore, a drone was utilized to clear the apartment where the suspect was believed to be hiding. When it became obvious the suspect was not inside the apartment, all efforts were focused on locating the suspect. Intelligence was soon gathered that the suspect was holed up in a nearby apartment building and a new perimeter was established. A plan was devised to systematically search the four story apartment level. Your ability to remain calm in such a stressful situation allowed you to direct your team in a methodical search of all the apartments, ultimately capturing the suspect without injury being inflicted on officers or the suspect. This was an outstanding resolution to a potentially deadly situation to a large part to your leadership. I want to present you with this letter of commendation. Which will be shared with the police commission and a copy placed in your personnel folder. You are hurried by being presented with this department commendation award which you will wear on your uniform signifying your outstanding police work and service for this community. As chief of police and on behalf of the command personnel and each officer of the Portland Police Department, I want to congratulate you on earning this most prestigious recognition. You make Portland a great place to live, to raise a family, knowing they're protected by officers like you. The members of the tactical response unit, I'm here. All right, I love my people.
Don't apologize.
The second one is the officer of the year award. Selected by the chief of police and his command staff. And due to the position of this individual, we are not having him here, nor mentioning his name. But I think all of you will recognize who he is. In April twenty two, after several meetings with Sheriff Mark Holmes, Mayor Scott Speed and the Portland City Police Command Staff, it was decided to revitalize Portland County drug test. The attempt was to once again have a harmonious relationship between narcotic investigators from the two agencies working together as a team to combat the ever increasing narcotic issue plaguing our community. Was a known fact that our two agencies are frequently dealing with same individuals, whether inside the city of Portland or out in one of the towns or villages in the county. The decision was to revitalize, the team was an easy one to make and the choice to place you as our representative to the task force certainly appears to have been the correct. In twenty twenty two, while you were worked alongside Sergeant from the Portland County Sheriff's Department, you worked nearly thirty narcotic cases along with nearly thirty criminal investigations of your own. The workload was impressive enough, but the results of your narcotic investigations is outstanding. The two of you arrested twenty five suspects on felony charges, executed ten search warrants and confiscated seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars in illegal narcotic proceeds. However, more important is the fact that you see fifteen firearms, twenty four grams of cocaine, nine and a half pounds of marijuana, twelve grams marijuana. Twelve grams of fentanyl, eleven ounces of MDPV, eighteen and a half ounces of methamphetamine, one hundred forty five pharmaceutical pills, four ecstasy pills and five ounces of methamphetamine oils, all of which was intended for sale on our streets. Lastly, you were involved in some highly confidential investigations which are continuing at this time. Your commitment, dedication and tenacity, investigating skills are a credit not only to yourself, but this agency and the citizens of Portland. Conduct such as yours are what made Portland a great place to live and to raise a family. And it's for this reason, I am proud to recognize you as police officer of year for two. I present you with this letter and a commendation bar which you will wear on his uniform, if he wears it again. Signify this honor. And due to the nature of his work, he is not here, but I think you all know who it is. If you have any doubts, you can call. But he has done a superior job and we are truly thankful for all he does. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Next, we have a Director of Administration Finance Report, AKA the finances now, budget report. This will take the place of that now. Ms. Henty has been working diligently since she got here for many hours and many overtime hours and it's been a great fit. We appreciate her report. Thank you.
No problem. Attached in the packet under the financials, you will see cover memo and then behind that are the reports that you have been receiving. But those reports did not change to highlight the year-to-date actuals for May twenty twenty three. Looking at the summary table, general fund, water fund and wastewater fund. Currently, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures. This is not something we wouldn't expect. We collect a lot of tax revenue at the first part of the year. That's what sustains us through the latter part of the year. I'm happy to report though that current expenditures in all funds are less than just the straight line projection. So we are in largely a good position overall. But we'll also let you know I did not do a deep dive this month. So really looking at the funding level, there are definitely some additional transactions and other items that will be cleaned up throughout the year, which some of which I note later on in the reports, a couple of them being appropriation of fund balance for encumbrances which have been approved. Transaction just hasn't actually hit munis yet, which is why we're seeing our revised budgets are balanced. And we have additional debt service payments coming throughout the year, which is traditional, but some of those are a little sporadic. So you may see spikes in the months that, which those hit. I did not report on the capital fund in the memo largely because we have to do some cleanup there. It is reported in the packet in terms of the munis year-to-date budget report. So that information is there. I'm happy to answer any questions. Provide follow-up if there's something you all would like me to investigate individually on that. And then in terms of the grant and capital projects updates, we have eight attached. Those are the eight that you have been seeing. I won't go into detail of those tonight because you're familiar with those reports, but if there is one you would like me to highlight at a future meeting, please let me know. And then lastly, I do want to highlight the status of our external audit. So as you're aware, our twenty one audit is currently wrapping up. We have not completed it. We are close to completion. We plan to present this information to you at the July eighteenth meeting. And we've started our twenty twenty two external audit engagement. They will be onsite Thursday, I believe, this week and they have essentially three weeks throughout the engagement period where they come onsite for a variety of items and then the rest is a hybrid approach where we're working with them remotely and sharing documents, the initial schedule. If everything can stay on schedule, we hope to present that the second meeting in September. We'll tell you, we're gonna work very diligently, but that may may not hit that September deadline if we cannot provide them all the documentation they need to keep that schedule. So it's a very truncated and tight schedule. If we miss a deadline, we may be looking at an October meeting. So I just wanted to provide that update as well. And although there are any other questions, I'd be happy to bring them to them.
Maybe an update on the A U D for this year?
Yes, twenty twenty two A U D was submitted on June sixteenth, so this past Friday. That is roughly a month and two weeks late, but we are where we are at. We are up to date. They will follow up. The state controller's office will follow up with any questions. I anticipate that will happen over the next few months. We'll respond to their questions as we receive them.
And remember, she's, or she's a staff person as of this week as well.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the tenacity to keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor's report. Fire department had a couple graduates a couple of weeks ago, so we missed that last night. We'll be doing something further on that. And then in the near future, the Junior Fire Academy, which I advise is full, please, right, Chief? Yep, and so that, that's coming up and the hydrant program, which is a combination between the fire DPW and Youth Bureau. We'll see, they'll follow up here in a second with the Youth Bureau. And the Youth Bureau Department, the Wickwire Pool opens Saturday and twelve to seven daily, June twenty sixth. Hopefully our lifeguard will be good there. Hydrant Helper starts the June twenty sixth as well. So pick up your buckets at the Youth Bureau or Fire Department and we get some of these other ones done. There's still quite a few left. Looks a lot better. The Parks Building's open Monday from ten to five for the other parks buildings. Will you providing swim lessons for city residents first? Information will be released next week. Registration starts July third. That's a swim lesson. That's something they were able to get last minute. So it's all good except for the Youth Bureau. Fortunately, we missed the dairy parade and that was kind of last minute and one of those difficult situations to figure out. I think the right decision was made because that was pretty, some pretty nasty stuff. We did pull our employees out and during that time period, I'm not letting them be exposed to it as well. And they were able to do some improvements inside their buildings and some of the other long list of check items they needed to do. So that was, that worked out well. Construction projects continue on. I'm not gonna be noticed. Main Street's kind of tore up a little bit. Construction maybe is next week. So that won't be far behind. So sorry for the Hollywood specifically here. We apologize for the mess, but it'll be great when it's all done. And Clinton now continues to be a thorn and we will continue to work at that, those areas of water. So we'll continue to work on those. And that's police department, a lot of good things happening there, which you've got some of that just recently. And wastewater is now fully staffed for the first time in how long? And so that's, that's good news there too as of Monday. So everybody's making great progress and I appreciate all departments and what they've done in the highway, specifically in public. They have done pretty much a record from what I can understand. They build eleven streets in six and a half days. They get paid. So shooting for twenty two by the end of, end of this year, which is four lay miles, which is pretty impressive. They're doing, they've done, they're planning on doing sixty four eighty eight ramps as well. So over the last two years, that's a hundred and thirty nine eighty eight ramps. So that's, that's good, that's good news all went around. So as much as everything's kind of a mess right now, I think. So as much as everything's kind of a mess right now, I think everybody appreciated at some point. So those are all good progress. And of course, there's some stormwater management in your district. This panel is being cleaned up, and then the other two districts are being looked at, and that's being studied. And that'll be further information on that. So they're making great progress, and they're making great use of this beautiful summer that we've had so far for the working weather, except for those smoggy days. So that's all I had. So we'll go to Ward reports. We can, if we had a question.
Mr. Scott. Ward one. So I got to visit Juneteenth. What a great event. I'm sure there'll be people to follow me, they'll speak more on it, but well-planned, well-laid out, great speakers, organized very well. I think, you know, you look up the sky, and it was an overcast day, and maybe some people thought it might have rained, and it really deserved more attention. It was, it was very well done. I appreciated the, the time I got to spend there. Actually broke away from another event to come over to do that, because it felt like it was an important thing right here in the center of the city. DPW, I've had, I don't know, Nick, probably since the last time we met here, five or six calls to you. I just want to say thank you. You guys have handled everything above and beyond and super fast. Constituents are getting what they want, and you really appreciate that more than one. I mentioned this either a meeting or two ago, grass in the streets, when you're mowing your lawn, please don't leave the grass in the street when you're done. A motorcycle hits that, it's like they hit ice. Make sure it's either blown out or swept out of the street. Better yet, never get it there. Turn your mower in until you can't cast it out in the street. I witnessed two of those today that were big industrials, and they had no blowers, nothing. When I spoke to the business owners, really not trying to police it myself, but I just happened to see them back to back, side to side. The companies were very concerned and wanted to make sure that their lawn care companies were keeping the grass out of the street. So if that's something that's happening in and around your area, please either end it yourself or help other people to end it, because it does get dangerous for our motorcycles. Lastly, I wanted to thank my ward for the questions and the outreach lately. I believe I said that the number that was published for me, the phone number in the last meeting, was the best way to get ahold of me. Please continue to use that phone number. It works so much faster than email or any other way to get ahold of me. My calls have gone through the roof, but it's been great. Ward one has really reached out. We've really been able to answer some questions and help with some problems that the constituents feel are at the top of the priority list. So I wanted to thank my ward for, for being able to do that and step up and contact me more frequently. And that's it for Ward one.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Ward two, we saw graffiti on the block and shoes on the line at the corner of Pleasant and Clayton. The graffiti's been there since Saint Practice Day in March, without concern. Sorry, my voice has been rough ever since we had all that smoke. I'm still recovering, I guess. I regret not being available for the Juneteenth celebration. I'm glad to hear that it was good. I think it'll keep building. I think that's the nature of these kinds of celebrations, that they just get bigger and better and better and more well-intended. So I look forward to the next one. But I was out of town. I was able to attend the Parker School meeting at Parker. I think we had a good turnout. Unfortunately, our online presence failed because we were using a hotspot in the school, and it just couldn't handle the traffic and everything we were dealing with. But I think that thanks to a lot of people, most of the questions were recorded, and our clerk is busy, has been busy putting together a document that will be, that's online as of today. Isn't that correct?
It went up Friday.
It went up Friday. I was out of town. And we'll talk more about that later. I have heard from people. And I'm pleased to be hearing from people. I hope that you'll continue to email me and call me. We really need to hear how the community feels about this, so that's it for Ward two.
Thank you.
So Ward three, a few things. And I, too, Saturday, I was with my granddaughter up in Clay, so I wasn't in town for the Juneteenth, but next year I'll be there. And I, too, was at Parker School, the meeting. We'll talk about that later. I want to thank Nick. He's probably getting so sick and tired of my emails about the beavers. And there was another one between Townley and Burn Dairy, but that's been taken care of, right, Nick? And hopefully that will be it for a while. And also, I want to thank Chief Sandy, because a constituent called me and had an issue with something on Tompkins Street with a tractor trailer that was parked on the street. And so the chief horse got right on it, and I want to thank him for that, and she was very grateful, too. So, but other than that, things are going very smoothly in the ward.
Thank you. Ms. Lane.
Last night, or early evening, I received a text from Battalion Chief, soon-to-be Assistant Fire Chief Reynolds, concerning a water main break at the P E R Center, and it was seeping into the high-voltage area room at P E R. I don't know if you want to speak.
So we had a six-inch water main break at the college. It filled up the boiler room and encroached in the high-voltage electric room. We were able to work with Justin and Matt and Water Department to come over and isolate the water below the building, and work the facilities at the college to isolate the power. And then we were able to start remediation, getting the water out, getting air quick to dry out. Can't tell you a dollar amount estimate. There, it's more than your real house, but obviously thousands and thousands of dollars worth of damage. But we were able to get there as soon as a smoke detector triggered. So there was electrical arcades shorting, shorting out equipment in the basement, so that's what triggered us to the alarm.
There was probably two feet of water in the basement, and it hit the bus here and started heating the water. And the same, like, it was all, what was the temperature in there?
Hundred and fifteen degrees.
And it heated the water at a hundred and fifteen, and it was a big room, talented, so. Of course, if anybody was hurt, thank you for being smart to not walk on those metal stairs.
Yeah, really.
Or maybe you had the rubber.
With metal.
But that was a significant event. I think it's just built on your generation, right?
Oh, yes, building so on your generation.
I, too, had to miss the Juneteenth celebration. My daughter, we had a surprise fiftieth birthday party for her. I had her when I was very young. Four, yeah, I was four. So I, I, too, will be there next year. This is serious. I received a call from a constituent concerning her neighbors across the street had two big barbecue grills and a picnic table in their front yard. And she, she didn't appreciate it. I got ahold of Roy. Roy said, "It's not against code. It's, it's on their property." Why they don't have it in the backyard, we didn't know, but, so I let her know. And I drove past today, and the grills and the table have been moved, so I assume they're in the backyard now. Received a call from a constituent regarding property on Broadway, which has now become the Broadway House. It's a blue house right on the corner, and I've been told that there's now EMTs for the college that are being housed there. Yes. She was concerned that the, it's a college property, and they were using city garbage totes. And she wanted to know if the totes had been purchased or, you know, just exactly why, why they were using them. I called Nick. Nick looked into it, found out that because the house, when, when the totes were delivered, that it looked like a single-family home, and they, according to the assessment rules, it's a single-family home. And so he got ahold of people at the college, and the college takes care of their own garbage, and those totes will be picked up. And the college will, will be taking care of the garbage there. And the constituent was very happy that, that it got taken care of. And from what I understand, there are other issues with properties and totes, because the assessment rules were used, and that there's maybe some things that are off with, with the assessment rules, something that isn't a single-family home comes up as a single-family home. And so there are some issues, but that's, that's from four.
Yes, there was many issues, and most of them, but it'll be still up more to go. That's your time.
Thank you, Mayor. From the fifth ward, a few, a few items. One, I serve on the Juneteenth Committee, and I want to say thank you to the mayor for his efforts, for him being there and saying a few words. But I'd also, if I had a commendation, I, from the committee, I would be delivering that to Chief Sandy for all his support in person and behind the scenes. I thank you, Chief Sandy, and the rest of the Police Department. It was a wonderful event. We had nearly a hundred individuals in attendance. And I'm hoping as well that we continue to grow and be a testament to the city of Portland and the people of Portland.
Somebody suggested to me banners on Main Street. I mean, Main Street's a shambles, but banners would be really helpful to help promote the event.
We didn't want to cause any damage to anyone's car, so we decided not to hang anything when people keep their eyes on the road. But I will beg that for next twenty-two years.
And it came to my attention that people who want to promote their events on the city website, which I love to have all of this on the city website, the organizers need to submit a form well ahead of time, so that would be another good thing to be finished.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to interrupt your.
Appreciate the feedback. In relationship to other concerns and reports from constituents, South Main Street continues to be a concern in that ward when we're looking at the health and safety of children, especially near parks. The construction, I guess, I guess, start point or storage, storage area down that area. There's some dangerous items out there. I have pictures of it, rusted nails, pipes, concrete blocks. It looks inviting as a ninja warrior site, potentially. And I really don't want, want to see anything bad happen to, to any of our youths in the, in the area. Any sort of tape or anything else might, might be helpful in that area. In addition, parking on South Main and tractor trailers traveling up South Main slash Randall Avenue are a concern. There's certain blind spots at the corner of that, that area. And parking that neighbor took time, or station took time, and asked me to come down and check that out. And I, I think it might be a concern, so we're, we're going to be working through that. And then also on South Main, if you look down that, that street, it's pretty empty on as far as trees, and, and today's Arbor, recommendation for Arbor Day. I recommend that we get some trees planted down there, because it's pretty, pretty open, and so that's it from the fifth ward.
All right, thank you very much. Apparently. Getting back to the awards that Paul Sandy gave off tonight, I'm just trying to say that you know, police officers, specialty units like the tactical response team, Chad Heinz is involved, and he's in charge of the drug task force, those are specialty units that you put certain people in certain positions to succeed. And the mayor and Paul have done that to re, you know, to rejuvenate that unit, which is a huge unit. It's a big deal to the city. We've had a lot of problems with drugs over the years. I give you guys credit, all of the men, for getting that going. I see a lot of, a lot of good work. Getting on to the park, Yaman Park, the new park is coming in tomorrow, the swing sets and all that. Talk to Andrea. That'll be done in due time when DPW gets together with that. The C N S report about the water, we're going to be suing about that whenever we give ahold of the engineering unit, because there's some, some things we want to talk about, make sure those issues are finally gone, not just quick fixes, simple fixes, and a cheap fix. We want to make sure that everything's done for all three areas. That's all I have.
Mr. Beckwith.
I'm quiet this time. Oh, you're working on my one job.
All right. Approval of minutes. I got a month in the next session as Mr. Scott, Carpenter, any questions on this? I was in favor. Proclamation, we kind of did that backwards. All right, so we have one proclamation for declaring June twentieth Arbor Day in the city of Portland.
Resolve trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Scott Stee, mayor of the city of Portland, do hereby proclaim June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three Arbor Day in the city of Portland, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this future generations.
Your motion? Mr. Scott, Mr. Beckwith. So I want to thank Mr. Dexter, who could make it tonight, Ms. Batting, and Ms. Quail, who are all working hard and diligently to have this committee. People, so anybody that knows people that has the interest to do that, we can get trees on South Main if you want to. But I have some interest in there, but they can certainly use some help. There's a lot of other good things going on. We cleaned up I'm Wendy's, and that with soil and waters are going to get more trees over there, so we can they're going to hydroseed that, take some of the mulch and put the mulch over that, and then get a hydroseed in some of our, our organic mulch that we have. We're going to spread that over top, and then hydroseed all that. That'd be a nice area with visions, long-term, plus DOT authorized as well. Nice path off there for people to come on, walk around, and walk their dogs, stretch their legs a little bit, and traveling, and maybe get some of those restaurants. So that's great, but this, the tree committee, I come, they've done a great job of working hard, and they really take it passionately and personally, every bit of it, you know, working together with soil and water now to get some more trees and some more grant fundings. Keep adding the trees, and we all know how important the trees are, right, on Main Street, too, right? Plastic pound trees all aside, I think, we need to have those trees, and it really makes a difference. It really helps long-term. So with that, I would like to move it.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Agenda item number one, amend the twenty-two-three adopted budget by seven hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred and twelve.
Resolved by the city of Portland Common Council on this twentieth day of June two thousand twenty-three. That the two thousand twenty-three budget be and is hereby amended in the amount of seven hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred and twelve dollars, as outlined in the accompanying table and described above, and be it further resolved that the city of Portland Common Council declare the Youth Bureau truck as surplus property. They advertise the vehicle for sale and appropriate those proceeds to account A seven one one zero by four zero five zero two.
I'm moving. Second, Mr. Scott. So this will be the new format that we're going to be working out for doing these budget amendments, so we can get them more. Thing up the process that you, Ms. Henty, for doing that, and if anybody has any questions on any of them, we would say we hold it back and do it. But any resolutions, so if anybody has any question anytime, please. Anything I'm good?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannella.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwood. Councilmember Michaels. Oh, I'm sorry. He's in Florida.
Adopt a general fund budget for increases in the new New York State twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and assistance for the city's speed repairs.
Resolved that the city's two thousand twenty-three general fund adopted budget be amended to reflect the follow-up uses of available funding. Expenditure of three hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred twelve dollars eighty-one cents of available consulate consolidated local street and highway improvement program. Funding for repair towards, for repair of streets and curbing. Expenditure of four hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars eighty cents of available CHIPS funding for repair towards equipment purchases. Expenditure of one hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars sixty-seven cents of available extreme weather recovery funding for its repair of streets and curbing. Expenditure of one hundred ninety-five thousand, ninety-one dollars seven cents of available paid New York funding for its repair of streets and curbing. Expenditure of one million, one hundred ninety-eight, three hundred ninety-nine thousand thirty-five cents of available state touring route funding towards repair of streets, curbing and traffic signals. An expenditure of six hundred, sixty-six thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars seventy-five cents of available paybar potholes funding for repair towards repair of streets and curbing.
For the record, I have a motion by Ms. Pennell and second by Mr. Beckwood. One, one thing I know is here, the expenditure for the CHIPS funding, you know, typically I kind of would like to see that always going back towards the roads, but we got to the point where their equipment purchases and repairs are so far behind from where we should be and what they need to be. We need to get good equipment to have that. It's best to move that. We're about maxed out as far as how much work we can get done in one year. So with the increase of other funding. So we have a good funding source to do that. But, but so I don't necessarily like to necessarily do that all the time, but I think in this case, it makes the most, most sense for what the department.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to highlight that that amount is largely rollover funds as well.
Rollover funds that we had, that's something we spent a lot of construction, I mean, it's last year. And has to be designated for that. And so that's the only way to stretch towards doing that. So that's a way to replace some of the worn out, tired equipment that needs to have, or a loader that caught fire last meeting or the last meeting day. That needs to be, hopefully was, was the help of the insurance company as well. Do we keep a question on that? Do we keep a depreciation of, of our equipment? We have all of our assets.
We do have all of our assets. You will see sometime in the near future that a policy will come before you for capital assets. And to, we have schedules, things have been depreciated. We need to make a policy to make sure that's consistent as it's changed over a variety of years.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Pannella. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwood.
Agenda item one three, authorize the award of micro enterprise assistance program funds under community development block grant. Number two eight five, M E five oh six dash twenty. Result that the city of Portland Common Council does hereby approve the award of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to Robinson Stanley Jewelers. Subject to terms and conditions as required under the C D B G micro enterprise regulations and is established by the map review committee and be it further resolved that the mayor of the city of Portland is authorized to sign commitment letters detailing the terms and conditions of the award of these funds and any other documents necessary to implement the award said Monday.
Motion. I think Mr. Cunningham here, if anybody has any questions to talk about it, or Mr. Ellis sits on that door as well. For the awards of that, we just got a quick, a quick overview. Prepared or if that's a one, okay, that's.
In shootings, you can fill in.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll team. Yeah, we'll work together.
Teamwork's good. No, as you know, the city was awarded two hundred thousand dollars in a micro enterprise assistance grant. That's for businesses with fiber viewer employees. And you've awarded a couple of those out of this grant a few meetings ago. I forget exactly when that was. Just with one application that was initially put forward, the committee reviewed and wants more information. Met again a week or so ago. I will commend the city loan review committee, the, I believe, Lisa Ann who's able to join us on that. They do a really good job of looking at financials, going through business plans, making sure that these are good investments for the city. You don't get the ones that they don't approve. But you know, there are applications that they look at and they say, we don't think this is a right use of these funds. This particular program, and this is a business that's been around since I believe about twenty nineteen in the downtown area, not on Main Street. So I always want to be helping out down there businesses. They're looking to purchase a couple pieces of equipment, a laser welder and an arc welder. And that's going to allow them to move repairs in-house, which will, you know, allow them to hopefully eventually. Well, will allow them to increase their revenue, also hopefully eventually help them to add staff. They're also going to open up a new line of jewelry, as well as do some, actually some more custom jewelry making. Which was, I forget what it was, cause I'm not a big jewelry guy.
Was an upgrade of jewelry.
Yeah, there was a design of a Revani line of jewelry, as well as classless jewelry, medium pattern classless jewelry. Maybe some of you don't know exactly what that is, but.
That's raising more questions than I had before.
Well, and just also to add to what Rich said, we had requested more information from the Robinsons because we had some concerns about their accounting practices. And they were very forthcoming and, and have changed accountants and we also have requested quarterly reports from them. So just to really keep an eye on, you know, we take this very seriously. This is city money. So taxpayers and we want to be able to account for our decisions. So that's in addition.
Yes, just one quick thing, now that we got Mary Claire, Lisa on board now. To make sure these people, we just wrote off one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and a cold bean. Hell, it's going to happen in my time again. A bad death on some of this stuff was, I don't want, end of story. I know it's more work for you, but somebody's got to pay more attention to these people going to default on these loans.
We do take UCC that equipment and there is a priority to use this funding for equipment purchases. Not that you necessarily have a need for an arc welder at the city. Take it back, but it does sound about it.
They're more, much more diligent.
I think any of your billions here and Katie, that would just disgrace to our city and doesn't need to happen again.
Moving forward, so.
All right. I just wanted to make two points.
Anybody else?
I would just add lastly, is we still accepting applications? About half the program funds are supposed to be dedicated to new businesses. I think at this point we've approved one. So, you know, I would encourage anybody that might be looking to open up a business, but they have an existing business, they want to expand. Please get in touch with our office, because they're looking for more applicants.
Is there any, Rich, is there any exceptions for more than five employees or five is that the max?
That's a federal rule, so. And that's by headcount, not full-time work.
So it'd be great to have some more of these, we've got spots on Main Street or anywhere in the city, but for sure, we have lots of stimulation. Even on South that, we could use some stimulation for sure.
The money rolls over year to year or?
We have a twenty-four, twenty-four month time period on a grant where.
It doesn't get used, you don't get it back.
So yeah, we don't use it by the end of the grant period, then it goes back to the state. But we'll get it used. Or we continue to market, but obviously word of mouth is one of the best ways to get it out.
Everybody has those ideas, let's get them out there for sure. Thank you, appreciate it. I want to make a question on the next one if you want to hang out. All right, anybody else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Pannella. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwood.
Agenda item number four, set required second public hearing related to community development block grant. C D B G number two eight five H R one four four dash twenty, which provided funding for the citywide owner occupied housing rehabilitation program through New York State Small City C D B G program.
Resolved that a public hearing with respect to community development block grant, which provided funding for the citywide owner occupied housing rehabilitation program under the New York State Small City C D B G program shall be held on the eighteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-three at six P M at City Hall, twenty-five Port Street, Portland, New York. Notice of such public hearing shall be published in the official newspaper of the city of Portland.
Motion. Pennell. Solomon. Again, Rich, you would just give a quick overview on that.
Sure. The small city community block grant program is federal funding from the Department of Housing and Development that gets run through New York State. The city has been a constant user of that program, you know, mounting millions of dollars in past, over many decades. This particular grant was for five hundred thousand dollars to renovate owner occupied homes. Occupied by low income homeowners. I don't know how the exact number, but I guess we renovated about fourteen to fifteen homes under the program. And what the program requires is obviously, I think we just had one recently. You have to have an initial public hearing before applying for funding. And then you're required to have a hearing near the end of the program to get public input on the program, how it's managed, what has accomplished and, and those sorts of things. So then just scheduling that second public hearing. We've got a twenty twenty-one grant that's moving along well. That public hearing, second public hearing probably happened later this summer or early fall.
Can you reach out to some of the recipients of the grant and ask specifically, they'll come and share their experience with us?
Sure.
That would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Pannella. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwood.
Did you think the next one too? Uh, yeah, I think so, right?
Agenda number five, authorized submission of twenty twenty-three Environmental Protection Act Parks Development Grant for Randall School, or Randall Park improvement project.
Resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to apply for and accept E P F grant funds in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for the project described in the grant application. And be it further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract with O P R H P for such Randall Park improvements project. Be it further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized, directed to agree to the terms and conditions of any required deed of easement granted to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation that affects title to the real property owned by the municipality and approved by the grant funds, which may be duly recorded public access, which may be a duly recorded public access covenant, conservation easement and or preservation covenant. And be it further resolved that the city of Portland Common Council delegate signing authority to execute the master contract and any amendment thereto and any deed of assessment and any other certifications to the mayor.
Okay, can I get more? See, back with. Mr. Scott. Yeah, so this would be a great needed, I'm sure Mr. Michael would like to have a comment on this, but we'll keep him quiet and forward.
I think he's got control of that.
You want to speak on that, Richard?
Yeah, real quickly, this is actually a resubmission of an application that was submitted last year that wasn't funded. We got feedback from the Office of Parks. In generally, the project scored well, the grant application did pretty well. It's a very competitive program. One of the main issues that they brought to light was that at the time of application last year, the city had three other open environmental protection fund grants. One of those was for the pool house. And the other two were related to the windows, I think that's some masonry restoration, fire station for historic preservation. The pool house one is closed out or is likely to be closed out very soon. So that's no longer going to be an issue. And I don't know the exact status of the ones for the fire station, but that, those projects are on, on target. I think they're ready to be closed out. So I don't think that issue is likely to be an issue for this year, because those are moving on well. The actual focus of the application is probably going to be changing somewhat. Last year, one of the big issues was we need to turn the softball field around in the other direction and do some turf improvements to that field. Apparently now, and somebody else this year, correct me if I could be wrong in this part. I believe the high school no longer uses that field. And so they determined that that's not such a high priority. So this year, the project is going to be going to a later phase, which will include, I think, some gateway improvements, public restrooms. You know, some of those sorts of improvements. But it's still part of the overall renovation and reimagining of Randall Park. As you know, the city is already moving forward on putting in some of the pickleball courts or transitioning some of the tennis courts to the pickleball courts. That certainly helps the grant applications show that, you know, you're investing your own funding, putting your money in, kind of regaining this part.
Thank you. Just, we all speak for Tom, because before I was, when I was in the fifth ward, I mean, I was always working on with John and Mary to try and get back those class sports renovated there where I saw it and get it going, because we kind of split that area. And finally, it looks, that's what was coming. And a little bit of time for sure. I know residents certainly appreciate the efforts that are being made by the city. A lot of pickleball enthusiasts in that, in that area of the city. On competition.
Stay tuned, or stay tuned for the first man.
Yeah, that'd be great. So anybody else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Pannella. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwood.
Thank you, Rich.
Agenda item number six, adopt local law number thirteen of twenty twenty-three to amend chapter eleven, article seven of the Administrative Code as it relates to the parking regulations and authority thereof in the city of Portland.
You want, you want to read into the text of the local law?
Uh, no, I just go to the result.
Resolved that the city of Portland Common Council does hereby adopt the local law to amend chapter eleven, article seven of the Administrative Code as it relates to parking regulations and authority thereof in the city of Portland.
All right, so I think, I don't know if we have still the people that made the comments earlier. Unfortunately, that happens sometimes. But Mr. Owen, I don't know if you caught those comments or not, but I want to clarify some of that, maybe talk about this local law.
Can you hear me okay? Um, I heard, one of the concerns I heard.
That softball field over Randall Park.
So one of the points I heard, I think it was the representatives from Hollywood, we're talking about paid parking, there's already been an issue for downtown employees, right? Ultimately, what, I mean, these changes have substantial impacts, but in a positive way. I don't know if you've ever taken a look at our parking scheme. But that chapter of our code is fifty pages long. So what this does is really simplify it. And this is what most municipalities of our size do. It gives the power to you, the council, to make changes instead of having to do a local law every single time we need to adjust something. Everybody knows we have problems with parking, especially with our municipal laws, particularly downtown. Law inconsistencies, what we wanted to do was make it as clear as possible for.
Law inconsistencies, what we wanted to do was make it as clear as possible for people. You know, I I spent some time on a parking ticket appeal board once a month. Um, and one of the biggest complaints that we received is that people just don't know. Um, and what we wanna do is make it easier, right? So odd even, those types of things, theoretically, we're going. Um, there'd be three types of permits, but we don't need to list those things in the charter or the code. And if it's not working, we have to make a change every single time. So what it would do is give. Council a regulatory authority to adjust and modify as needed. Um, so if. You know, like that that includes rates. That includes permanent parking, you know, that includes eventually paid parking whether it's short term or long term. Well, I think the goal is, again, one simplicity and clarity. Like this is a municipal lot. You got a downtown employee parking pass. If you have a residential pass or you have an evening uh downtown employee pass, I think that's the other one being considered. That happens a lot, these people who work till two A M and they'll get ticketing. A lot. But then you can park, you don't have to go find a specific spot within a lot. Or a specific section within a lot or move your car, as long as you have. The right permit, uh, obviously, so if the council approval will come, that's, then you're gonna be good. You don't have to go back and forth. Um, one of the biggest issues in our particular code is having done it by local laws that. Every single little thing. Required a change, and I could point you at some examples, this is my working version, but. And you can see at this section, this lists. Local laws. No tests. No actual law, because all the revisions that were made to parking prohibited at all times, that tells. You know, drivers not. Right? Um, and that's and that's really the goal, that there should be a resource and it's gonna be you guys. If this if this legislation gets passed. Um, that people can refer to, understand what the parking scheme was like, whether it's a Dexter lot. Whether it's a kind of a ground nap parking lot, whether it's the Orchard Street parking lot, which is a lot within a lot. It's all gonna be the same scheme, no matter the municipal. And if changes need to be made, and I imagine that there probably will be some adjustments. We don't have to go through the necessity of a public hearing. There will be public input, it's gonna be put to council, everyone will get to contribute, but. Minor modifications can be made quickly and efficiently. On the problem arises. Ultimately, the goal is. Make it clear, right? I don't, I mean, it took us a while, but all, but the plan was to consolidate it. Put it to you guys, just regulatory authority with respect to parking, I mean, municipal lots. Whether it's prohibited, whether it's reserved spaces, handicap things or employee parking in certain situations. We just wanna make every, make sure everyone gets a fair shake and they're not moving their cars all the time or. And a lot of times we have people who have the permits, but people are parking their spot. There's nothing they can do about it, they get ticketed. So. That's the plan.
All right, uh, yes, yeah, if they have any questions on the local law part of, uh, Mister Molhill and uh, B C Guerrero, Lieutenant Q have all been part of putting together the uh enforcement package as well as doing overall. Mister Molhill's kind of uh take the lead in this, so I appreciate that for sure, he's in the audience today. Um, I don't know if you wanna give a chance to get up there and maybe just talk about some of the direction where we are, maybe some of the in. The fallacies of some of the concerns that some of the valid concerns that they've brought up. Today at the meeting that how that is going to address that problem. Go on, super.
Good evening, council. Thank you for uh, inviting me up this evening. Um, as the mayor said, uh, the Portland Business Development Corporation has been involved in trying to take a look at the parking situation in uh downtown Portland. Particularly in light of the construction. The loss of parking spaces, our agency has stepped up uh multiple times uh over the years and look at. Uh, the the issue of parking at the business district, most recently with a ten thousand dollar study. Really identified that the city does have a fair amount of parking assets, they're just not particularly well managed. Uh, everybody wants to park exactly where they wanna go and um, that leads to some lots being disproportionately used more than other lots. Parking being very competitive. Uh, so. With working with uh Mayor Steve's administration, we've sat down with the individuals involved and really tried to take a total look at uh the whole park program in the city. What we quickly realized and uh. Your corporation council has hit on that this evening is that there really is a hodgepodge of regulations. It makes it difficult to affect any kind of meaningful changes in any one direction. Whether it's eliminating the odd even parking as as council mentioned, or if it's recognizing the uh residential parking program. That in fact was never really added to your local laws in in the correct way. And so to uh the ownership of the Hollywood, uh, they 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 do have a disproportionate number of residential parking districts. Because it was never really managed, right? It was just sort of put together and and here we find ourselves. Um, the good news is, and I think it was referenced earlier, is that one of the goals of the city and the county some twenty years ago was to encourage more folks to live and work downtown. That's happening. That that problem has has come full circle. It's it's a good problem to have, and now we need to manage that parking resource to uh support folks living and working downtown. Uh, the city some months ago decided to go in the direction of uh uh establishing a digital platform. Uh, the first step was to set that platform up. I won't get into short term paid parking, I think that that's a little bit premature at this time or to do with uh downtown under construction and also at least your biggest lot, uh, second biggest lot, I believe. Uh, potentially undergoing a pretty substantial renovation. However, with students gone. Uh, now is a great time, in my opinion, to visit the uh parking permits issue, which is the next step if council chooses to act on this local law this evening. Uh, that will allow us to move to a digital platform whereby folks that are either living, working downtown or have uh need to park long term and access parking permits. They can know if a parking permit is available, staff can manage those permits. Uh, it also requests that folks provide documentation to justify why they would need a permit downtown. A lot of those things aren't being done, and that's with no balls of staff or or city, it's just been that been a practice in the past. So. Again, we recognize that uh parking is an asset and one that the city uh has a responsibility to manage. And we certainly uh remain committed to try and help that process.
So setting aside the question of paid parking and where paid parking be. Because we're not there yet. And. Can you? Can you address more of the concerns of the owners of the Hollywood, because they have been. Trying to get some help with that one for years, and it just because it's such, because the regulations were so. Um, messy, seen haphazard, just wasn't happening. So what? What what would we do for them, for instance?
Well, I think, again, uh, by by moving in this direction, it allows the city to determine, do we have enough permits out there? Do we have to then? Um, are we making sure to the uh quite the concern that was raised earlier, are appropriate individuals parking in those lots? Are uh individuals who maybe live in neighborhoods around uh city-owned parking facilities. Uh, taking advantage of those facilities, uh, because there isn't enough parking provided to them? Again, these would be issues that could be better managed as a result of making these changes. We can verify addresses, we can ask for a copy of a lease for a specific property that then would trigger uh uh somebody in in, I believe, the clerk's office to approve that permit. Whereas right now, uh, those permits are being issued with really not a lot of guidance. And uh, not a lot of oversight, and so uh as far as the issues of maintenance and and the other concerns, and. Having this uh digital platform, it will allow us better communication. Uh, better contact with the permit holders to uh, I I hope, work with B P W and others to to make sure that the lots are are better maintained. As as a result of this.
So let me address it just a little bit farther. So as one of the issues that Spicy brought up, the filing aspect. Right now, they're get, there was parking spots that they just, they can stay there, so they would stay there and then they'd pull out there. I'm not pulling back in the neck, because now it's frozen with ice. E W can't get between all those cars.
Right.
We have to do that now, we can send a group text and say, you now need, if you're in this zone A through one three oh four. By B, I think is the way the numbers go, you now have to park somewhere with this other spot, you need to get away. They don't move when we move them, and then we have some more aspects to that. So that's a benefit to that. Two, uh, we can designate those zones better and make it clear and make sure it's done. Enforcement aspect of it, we have L P Rs on our license plate reading on one of my vehicles, because it's on those cars. Was a was a simple drive-through. I I don't know what they read on two thirty miles an hour T, something like that. For the simple drive-through, they can tell you, if there's one of them that's in violation, stop and take care of the situation. So enforcement becomes very for the ones that are playing the game. The odd even was a real problem, because you basically block off fifty percent of your lot, because they can't park there that night. And the next morning, you know, who was there, what time were they there, did they come in early, or, you know, it becomes an enforcement nightmare, and I've been in the courts, been in sitting in the traffic court. Since I started, just so that I could educate myself and it's fun to meet people. But educate how, what our issues are and what our problems are. So this alleviates a. I'm sure we're gonna have others, but I'm sure there's gonna be something through, but it gives us the opportunity to correct what's been wrong. And what's been built later and later. So I mean, there's parking lots that I didn't even identify in that document that are that. You know, we took over the building, we took over the parking lot, I think next to the fire halls, not even talked about. And then redesign those lots to gain more parking and to uh do that. So I think that's the long-term approach, but this gives us. The short-term approach to be able to adjust it, be able to do it. But I think that addresses her concern as far as the other uh. Um, the other concern, the steward's concern was, you know, as far as parking, and again, that's the odd even, which is the parking lot problem over here. That goes away and she, they can park their car, be more than reasonable to be able to do it. Sometimes enforcement is tough, because they're they're enforcing that two hour, you know, and that makes it harder. So that all gets corrected, fixed long-term, we can look at it differently, but right now, there is no. You know, we can talk about the parking and paid parking, we're not, I didn't talking about that. That's that, that certainly this has the avenue to do it, if you wanted to do it up by the college, if you wanted to do it any area, any different area. That's an opportunity that we can do, but this is the. The beginning stage of getting it.
So my last concern is that is. Is that the messages don't get out to the public, um. It's very difficult to get information out to the public and and get public feedback. Because communication doesn't work the way it used to. So if we don't have a public hearing aspect to it. I feel like there should be some sort of. Public hearing aspect. I'm all for having council. Be able to make changes as needed. I really am, but how can we bring the public in, make sure that they're informed?
Yeah, two things, I think that all of our, any changes we would make would be advertised. Anyways, I mean, you know, and not saying we couldn't do a public hearing, I understand that that would be the case, but it would be a local law, that would be the difference. We could still maintain it that it's a public hearing and still maintain, because we want their input.
Yeah.
It's all good stuff. I wish they were here to hear that all their prob, this solves all their problems.
Right.
Not all. This is also a lot of.
This addresses them.
Right, and but I think it's important, I think, so I I think we could still, we could still do the public here, but it's not a local law where we have to file it and then it and then do that. It gives us the war, they have a move on the theme.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that's a good change.
The new the new regulatory scheme, the language, I think it's eleven sixty-one. Or I think provides that dialogue, right? You know, changes will be, you made, you mentioned paid parking, we're not there yet.
Right.
You know, things will need to be adjusted from time to time. I'm sure that those things will. Be resolved with feedback. This will allow, I think, the council to make those adjustments as needed based upon that feedback, based upon that circulation of information, just. Adjust as the city needs. So, instead of being locked into. Some of the summer stuff.
Well, thank you for cleaning that. That's a good.
I gotta.
Good move.
I gotta give credit to Mister Molhill and the rest of the Jazz Force. I just read what you said.
Yeah, to your point, Mr. Sullivan, I believe the legislation also represents that any changes be allowed through the commission, so again, that is another level of. Uh, engagement with your your lay individuals, and as part of this review, we have held at least one public meeting with the elders, but I know we'll be. Holding additional outreach, just to again, make sure that uh we're getting good feedback and also that we're able to explain how the program works. Particularly that that technology concern. I will tell you that the the steering committee has been pretty split on. Kiosks and how best to manage that working forward, but again, we felt this was a good step to start a blockage approach everyone.
Yeah, so with the everyday, day-to-day people have to worry about, it's just a permit holder, it's very little easier to get, Mister Scott.
So, uh, and this only comes from the phone calls I feel that in the last seven to ten business days, um. To be very clear and on record, what we're voting for tonight is to give council. Control, we're not necessarily voting on. What systems we're gonna use, how much they're gonna cost, we're not doing details tonight, we're giving the control to the council.
Now.
I wanna be very clear in saying that and going on record that that's that's the way we're voting tonight. Uh, because I believe giving the council more control. Will give the constituents more control and their desires should be the way that we vote. Um, I've got a very. Concerned group that is. They definitely know the way they want us to vote on certain things. I wanna be clear, we're not voting on the details tonight, we're voting on the ability. To be that next layer of control to make those decisions.
Yes, let me just clarify a couple things, make sure I understand your questions, make sure it's clarified. We already voted on a system to have the electronic system, we did that last year, so that is, so make sure that that's not part of that.
No.
But as far as the the fee structure and all that, that is to be coming. Right, I mean, so, but this gives us the ability to set up those districts, set up those um residential permit areas and get those applications started.
So that gives. That's given the control to the council.
And so right now, to do the same cost as it was before for a permit, but we would be, make that presentation. And.
Yeah, very soon. I just wanna get.
We're trying to get it cleaned up and get this thing running before the college kids. So the way it would look is this. If this goes, if everybody approves tonight, then we already have the system in place, we already have the rules and regulations written. Due to the hard work of Mister Molhill and the the police department to working towards getting that done. That part's ready to go, we're ready to, the signage needs to go up, D P W has got the signage and we're working on the details of where the signage goes for the districts. And all that is, is for long-term. All right, okay, so that means working, parking and all that. So then when we change some of those rules and guidelines, we can try it, see how some of that goes. Come back to this board, bring up the ideas we wanna do that, and then those costs.
Without having to make a new law every month.
Right, and then we would, a public hearing, discuss it.
Yep, I just wanna be clear for the constituents.
Make sure I understood your question.
Yeah.
Because the system is not ready to play, then that would be basically the implementing first digital office. So we're gonna strike, try, start and use that, we're gonna get it worked out in the box before the college kids get back. So Hollywood doesn't have those problems, we don't have people parking all over the place, we can get people moved when we need to. For snow, purposely let the furnaces run out, so everybody's permits are running out, you can get that back.
I know that they've had an issue with people driving by and thinking, oh, the restaurant must be full because the parking lot's full, and they just make some crazy selling.
And that's what's happening, because they're not limited in those spots, and that's why I think you're gonna quickly see that to really fix the problem, they're gonna need to have some kind of paid parking to keep people from parking as close as they can. You know, like you're gonna get somebody parking next to the Hollywood and they're gonna park right next there, which would be a great pickup point or a a drop-off or a good place for somebody to eat restaurant. And then they're gonna walk up to the campus and be on campus all day, you know what I mean, and just be in classes, so. You know, I think, you know, we're we're gonna have to go towards that next step pretty quick, because to really fix the problem, you need to get control of it. I think we start with the implementation of this plan. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Thank. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. Hold it please.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Penello.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter, or excuse me, Car, Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Hi.
Agenda item number seven, approved special event and sound device permits for July twenty twenty-three Main Street Music Series in Courthouse Park.
Resolved that the city of Portland County Council does hereby approve for issuance by the city clerk. A special event permit and a sound device permit without fee. For the Main Street Music Series to be held in Courthouse Park from five thirty P M to nine thirty P M on July seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Again, motion, Mister Beckwith, Mister Carpenter. Um, this is an exciting thing I bring up in the mayor's report, we do have somebody in the audience that can speak to it. Uh, it's pretty exciting to have him on the green out there, working on some issues to try to get the state set up similar to the van, I think that worked out very well. Having it facing that way and and people are hearing the music up up the hill, which is kind of neat, brought some people in, so. It's kind of the same thing, and um, I think uh, this, we're excited about it, they got some great acts lined up, we can talk about that, yeah. They're going to, uh, of course, there will be uh alcohol and permits and they'll be all done by letter authority fenced in. Uh, and um, that's uh pretty exciting stuff to have.
It's the same one we used to have, the ma- the Main Street parking lot, just over there.
That's right.
It's agreed about.
Yeah, it is a. Yeah, it is a great event and instead of being in the Main Street parking lot, it'd be over there. So a little more comfortable. Have we ever had it in that location before? I, I do not know. I, I, my imagination, no, I, I've never seen it there. I've seen years. I used to go to the one on the Main Street lot. We've never had it over there. It's, it's a great. Oh, it's exciting. We'll see how it goes. We'll work out the bugs and make it better. Maybe go sit in Portland.
Please be sure to advertise it on the city website.
Make sure it's on the web, city website. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, approve a special event permit and partial street closing for the Salvation Army Race Against Hunger. Five K Run Walk on June, July twenty ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Uh, two thousand twenty three, my mistakes are. Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council does hereby approve for issuance by the City Clerk. A special event permit for the Salvation Army Race Against Hunger, five K Run Walk. To be held on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty three and be a further result. That the common council does hereby authorize a partial closing of Kennedy Parkway and Yaman Park Parking Lot. From the hours of nine A M to eleven A M on June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Carpenter. Yeah, this would be a great thing if I was doing and I have to start in two thousand thirteen. But this is a great event that they reached out to do that and the Salvation Army is. Great for our community and they're great help and the warning center alone has been awesome. And they endure a lot to do that and endure a lot for the community. So anybody that can do it, sort of how Hub Walk. And be part of it and do what we can do. So people wanna invite people to kind of complain all the way with you for up on T V walk. They want to talk about the city at that time, but we'll make sure we get there. Do you know, they do that.
Yeah, they have two hours.
They have two hours, wow, right, so. Okay, I can do that, I think. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Agenda item number nine, approve special event permit, sound device permit and street closing for the Portland Disabled. American Veterans Family Fun Day on July ninth, twenty twenty three.
Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council does hereby approve for issuance by the City Clerk. A special event permit and a sound device permit without fee. For the disabled American veterans, Portland Chapter one fifty three's. Family Fun Day event to be held on Scamel Street from twelve P M to six P M on July ninth, two thousand twenty three. And be a further result that the common council does hereby authorize a closing of Scamel Street. From the hours of twelve P M to six P M on July ninth, two thousand twenty three.
I have to give this to Mr. Scott. A big coordinator for this event. And just want to clarify, Mr. Beckwood, are you good for voting yes on agenda number eight? Pardon me, you're, you're good for, yeah, was your vote yes?
Yeah.
So back to agenda item number nine. That's it. Uh, July ninth is the date for this event. This is the first time, I believe.
Yes.
In this event. Uh, so it's gonna be uh kind of neat and exciting to have that down. There, so I don't want any other details to it.
Um, so the planning is going all the way through. Two big bands, which are gonna be great. Um, there's gonna be a lot of music. There's gonna be food trucks. Uh, there's gonna be face painting and then animals and pony rides and a. Uh camel and Dan the Snake Man and uh carnival games and a bounce house and uh. Dunk tank, which I think the mayor just didn't even volunteer to be in that thing. We could vote on that one tonight too. The idea is to provide something that is free to inexpensive. For that end of town to help revitalize it in the town. There's, you know, really three wards that are all walking distance. You know, to get there and um, the D A V has partnered with Gators and um, they've decided that they want to. You know, they've raised almost all the money. Uh, last I heard, they're about five hundred dollars short of actually having checks in hand to pay for everything. And if you don't participate with, you know, the, the dunk tank or the. Food trucks or anything, it's a completely free event and there's gonna be activities all day. Uh, there's gonna be Virgil Cane and Billy Glicky's new band. So there's gonna be high end quality entertainment. The big thing is to get the community involved without having them to have to pay for anything and to come realize the, this D A V. And this, you know, the Gators are, are wanting to be involved in the community. And don't necessarily, aren't necessarily looking for dollars all the time. They, they want to help. Um, so that's the premise behind the uh, behind the whole idea.
Anybody else? All right, move it please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Agenda item number ten, authorize agreement, G B Vincentis and Sons for construction relating to Grand Ave. Public improvements project.
Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to execute an agreement with G. He been sent his son's in the amount of. Seven million five hundred ninety six thousand dollars for construction work related to the Grand Avenue Public Improvement Project.
I'm, I'm second. Any questions?
I do. Real quick. One that's gonna start?
Mr. Dovey, you want to start and answer the question, please?
Next one. How bad is it gonna be with everything else going on?
We're not gonna paint you a pretty picture for you, for sure, but I, I think it'll be great. I think we gotta get it.
Drop out of me, cause I can get to anywhere. There's a lot of other roads that you travel on to get around.
People are doing it. Businesses are doing, you know, doing fine with, I think, you know, overall, you know. Both of them recognize it. They would just assume not have another year, which is, this is gonna take two years. So this will be this year and next year, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, that's, that's the idea there.
Well, needs to be done, unfortunately.
The one, what, one lane road, right? We have that meeting.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to schedule uh, like a pre-con conference and include C C I at the here. Uh, from Main Street for coordination purposes.
So uh, many or grat until two eighty one?
And, and then the idea is, there's, you know, they've pulled it one lane, so we can try to make that work and try to do the best we can. But it'd be diverted around to uh. Yeah, go drift it down and.
I think. Construction company on Main Street. I just wanted to get out there that people realize it's gonna be going on the same day.
Anybody else? All right, Wes, we'll go please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Sup, big mind?
And then item number eleven. Allow the mayor to authorize a contract at hand piping for the City of Portland's curb sidewalk ramp replacement project.
Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve. To execute an agreement with that hand piping for replacement and installation of curbing and curb ramps. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act on various streets for cost not to exceed eight hundred eighty one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
The Carpenter, again, this is hit like sixty four of them, I believe it was, uh, sixty four more, which is great. And get some of these ones that were, we'll get next to the roads they have been on. Anybody else?
I forget to turn the mats.
Oh yes, they are not the riveted mats, they're the. Yeah, that's been addressed. Thank you for that. Hey, you'll call it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Agenda item number twelve, accept and recognize donations to the Fire Department.
Resolved that the common council accept the donations listed below and appropriate funds to the Portland Fire Department donation accounts. Let's see, we got, got a mistake in here. I think what we want is. Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council agrees to accept a donation in the amount of twenty five dollars. From Kathy Olstead, made in memory of Jim LaBeaver, longtime fire coordinator for Portland County. And recognizes and extends its appreciation for her generosity. Be a further resolve that the common council appropriates the funds to the Fire Department donation account. Here marked for replacement and of an automated ex, the external debilitating. It bipolar and recognizes and extends its appreciation for the generosity of the donor.
That's right. Mr. Beckwood. Again, thank you, Miss Olstead. I appreciate that. Did what he was so wonderful, wonderful. Asset to our community, for sure. Will be, will be missed. Okay, move it please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels, sorry.
Agenda item number thirteen, authorized purchase of drone equipment for police and fire department use.
Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council hereby authorizes the City Police Department and the City Fire Department. To purchase two drones and accessory equipment for which they will share the initial cost of ten thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars. Along with all potential future costs and a joint venture for use in their respective duties.
Uh, Mr. Scott, Mr. Carpenter. Um, it's great to see that they're working as a team, those two back there. Well, this would be a great asset to uh be able to see, sink and see go inside the building and certainly they saw the value of it and recognized it. Uh, Heinz and his recognition uh working that to do that. They waited a long time for that drone and the community was on lockdown for a long time. So this will expedite things. Uh, if you're so generous to help uh work towards that. I know it's been very hard to put this together, so we appreciate them for doing that, making this happen. Any questions? Okay, move it please.
Councilmembers.
I have a question. Do we, we are operating, what type of laws are we having to observe any local laws? With deployment of the zone of the drones? Um, we have two F A certified operators and they will fly other. Thinking about privacy. Thank you.
Everybody else? Good question, thank you.
So, so future costs, um, the ten thousand for the drones. Additional training in the future, they've already had the training, we have paid for that also.
We do have two people trained, is that right, chief? Currently now, we'd have to. Yeah, we'd have, we'd have, I'm sure that the fire chief will basically get people, there'll be additional costs.
Sergeant Riley here, he's one of our trained operators. The control officer who's trained as instead of private.
Sergeant Riley, do you mind just maybe giving us some of the assets to doing this real quick if you don't mind? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you for having me, Sergeant Riley. Um, there are very many assets for this. With the fire department as well as, of course, without getting into tactics involved in this. Um, missing person searches. Search and rescue, hostage situations, barricaded subjects. It's, it's really endless. And the basis of the whole thing is safety of the officers. And also safety of the firefighters involved in what you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thanks for the uh. Willingness to volunteer and get trained for that and not back to. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Agenda item number fourteen, accept and recognize donations to the Police Department K nine unit.
Resolved that the City of Portland Common Council agrees to accept these donations. And appropriate the funding for the K nine program to assist in the purchase, training and equipping. Of a new K nine and recognizes and extends its appreciation for the generosity of the donors listed below. Donations from David and Christine McNeil in the amount of five thousand dollars. Donation from the Portland Community Service Club in the amount of one thousand dollars. And a donation from Philip and Marie Rumsey in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Carpenter, Ms. Lane. Um, again, thank you to uh, Mr. and Mrs. McNeil and uh, or Community Service Club as well as Judge Rumsey. And Marie Rumsey for their donations towards this, you know, we're able to get another dog. I don't know that they haven't been picked out yet, but we're bringing him or her up. It's him, right?
His name is Max.
Max, so Max will be coming and meeting everybody at some point. He's overzealous as court, probably. Um, so we're excited for that and we appreciate your tenacity, chief, for getting, making these donations happen. Thank you for that. It makes it a lot easier on the taxpayers and the benefit to doing that. And some of you noticed in June two, June two, they had the. The colleges got to talk for them to help people recover from uh accidents. Even our firefighters or the police department and they have a situation that this dog is being trained to develop from that, so. Kind of neat stuff. We have, we have a bomb dog, a fire, fire, you know. Um, bomb dog is a dog, if I, they have investigators have a fire dog and so we have these, so completely. Right, move it please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels. Sorry.
Agenda item number fifteen, authorize issuance of requests for proposals for the purchase and installation. Of boilers at the wastewater treatment.
Resolved that the wastewater treatment department is authorized to issue a request for proposals for the acquisition of two. Five million B T U H Cleaver Brooks Model Five boilers. And a request for proposal for installation of same. And be a further resolve that the City of Portland Common Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve to execute a contract. With the lowest responsible bidder for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for said boilers. And a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for installation of same.
And Solomon, Mr. Buckers, so just to follow up, um. When, when this is awarded, we'll make sure to come back to the committee to let everybody know the exact amounts. The reason for this is so that it can be expedited, so we can get it resolved before the fall winter time. I can get the bids, we wait another month, get help. On this end, we'll make sure that we get a report back. But when we get the bid amounts and what that total costs are, so it has after the. Everybody else? Over it please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So let's go on to some discussion items. This is a wrong one. I apologize. I'd like to get this done quicker, but we had this dip on, so we. So let's try to be on that. The motorized bike bicycles was actually put on, uh, Mr. Michael said ask to have some discussion about that. There's two different items I want to talk, would like to discuss about this motorized bike bicycles and then just kind of see what the overall intent of everybody around to have their body of what. Where they think we'd like to go on this and then we can get Mr. Melvin working up kind of local law that would be something we can address. But two, two, two problems. One with Mr. Michael brought up was a motorized bicycle, so they're gasoline powered motor. Bike bicycles that are coming around and driving on the streets or sidewalks. They're, you know, um, I think they're illegal to some aspects and. bike bicycles that are coming around and driving on the streets or sidewalks that are, you know, I think they're illegal to some aspects and but it's not, our local law isn't as clear as it needs to be. So from, from helmets to what lane they should be in, what their maximum speed could be, what the size of them are. And, you know, I see them disobeying the main street going in a wrong way. And then the secondary part of these are the gasoline powered ones and then you have the electric ones. And as I think the chief had sent me an email today, I think there's four people that were died in Manhattan last night alone from these e-bikes, these electronic bikes that are being plugged in. We had that fire on self name. We're really picking on self names. We started from there. And so we started having discussions with some, some of our local ETL, which is in our backyard. They, they do testing of batteries. So with their work and with the fire department working code office, we've been working together to try to come up with a formulated plan on being able to handle that. You know, some of the discussion is if you have some of these big rental companies, it's the biggest concern. If somebody had charging, one of those charging units put in there, a sprinkler is not going to put it out. If you ever watch it, it's like a flare shooting out sparks and it really ignites everything quickly. And typically, so, you know, you have, like, we're talking some new projects that are working on Main Street right now. Like if they had a fire rated room in that one room and they had these things there without some kind of handle system or some kind of system that would extinguish it quick enough, it might be an issue. But they're typically put in the stairwell, somebody's charging them in the stairwell of their building and they have no exhaust. So those are real concerns and I think it's something really draw attention to. We have contacted in our last meeting and contacted, I can kind of pick a little business owners downtown and find out which ones they're selling and get their, and get the educational pieces out there. So we're parading a flyer to educate people to say, don't leave them charging overnight. You know, whether it's your wireless battery, which happened behind Mr. Thompson's house, you know, wireless battery for your drill, your vehicle, electric bikes are a huge concern. So we want to try to get some implementation or coming back with from these electric point of views for the law and for us, for the code ability to be able to get that. And maybe we'll talk about doing some kind of registration on that, not as a money grab, as an education grab. And that's, so that's some of the legislation that we'd like to do, depending that everybody's appetite is that way, if that makes sense. So that's kind of where that is. And the occupancy tax side, which is the next discussion item. So unbeknownst to me, in the previous, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, I apologize. But previously, and I believe it was twenty twenty, that the that the council approved going to get to obtain an occupancy tax permit for the local hotels. And that could be up to one to three percent of increased cost to, to the hotels. And, and apparently got passed by the state. So with, once that gets passed by the state, we'd have to have our local law, local legislation, how we're going to collect it, how it's going to go, what the percentage is going to be, how it's going to work. But that did come to my attention, you know, with, certainly I talked about it and talked about using that in several different meetings here about utilizing that funding to fund, help on duty. There's some of these other music series, whatever, some of these other good events that we have in our community, we have to use some of that for tax and tourism to get people to come into the community. So I was contacted by Senator Webb's office and because the time period was expiring on, we had to have that renewed or we couldn't collect that tax anymore. Or we hadn't been collecting the tax over the last, I guess it was three years. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I apologize on the date. It was three years old, at least. So they extended it through COVID. So it was three years ago that we received it and we never did anything for three years.
It was because of COVID.
So they suspended.
The extra burden on the hotels.
Right. So then, so that got extended. And then so anyhow, so I let it lapse so that we could, because otherwise we'd had a special session to go through all this. And it would brought more questions. I think some serious debate considering to be brought to this. One, ironically today, one of the business owners on Main Street had approached me and said that, you know, you know, they were, they'd asked a question, how is it the baseball field been affecting them and being there? Well, last year they were seeing it pretty well, but now we're seeing hotels are going at three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars a night and you have that at two ninety, that's what they're requiring. So it's deterring people to go towards Ithaca. And again, this is what I've been told and I'm not validating any of that, but it's pushing people to go towards Ithaca, which is not bringing them here that we are. We had several vacancies because of that. So some of that driving that rate up another one percent, you know, whatever the case might be, is a consideration of something we should think about that was brought to my attention today that really should have some discussion and some further discussion. But I just wanted to kind of get the appetite of where we wanted to go here on the occupancy tax. That's what we're going to do. We can try to see what that revenues would look like, what we was looking at doing, maybe what that, then we get an idea what that would fund and what that would look like, what that increase would look like. You know, if it is three hundred and fifty dollars a night, which we validate and try to say, well, what that average cost would be at the end. So those would be the conversation based on the appetite, if that is the case of what this council is. It sounded like the previous council had appetite to do it, held back. But I know there's some opposition from the travel and tourism as well. That concern about the increased rates at the hotels.
And I, I also received a call from Senator Webb's office about the active tech and found out that it was there, it was approved, everything was said, but then over, you know, decided they didn't, they didn't want to, weren't there more, but just. I mean, again, looking at what to see, how much are we talking? Might be worth it.
Everybody else, anything else you would, would you want to entertain this? Would you want to have more discussion about it, whatever. So how much would be impacted, would be financially, would be received, you know?
Getting the cost of that, price of that.
Price is correct. We just said that. Yeah, that's, that's another conversation. You read into that.
It's gonna happen.
We'll look at, we'll look into that, a little bit for that to validate some of that. I have heard that we have been getting higher rates for sure, which is good benefit. We don't want to deter what that purpose is.
Attorney General's office be involved in something like that, gouging, gouging like that for.
For those to consider, but I mean.
I, I don't know if we're gouging maybe as much as collusion, you could, if that was the case, but I'm not making that accusation. I'm answering your question.
That allegation was made, but I think that in this, for this particular discussion topic, one thing to consider is that traditionally the, the occupancy taxes passed through to the customer. It's not something at a hotel would. Right. That's something to consider, man. Increased taxes for, taxes for us, but. Yeah, but if we're already.
The price of the, we had another, just one of three percent, right?
It's a property tax.
What's the impact of that?
Pretty bad when everybody's going to Ithaca because it's really high. You go there for cheaper price.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. It needs to keep it in here.
It's a lot higher than three fifty.
I, I don't know. I know the Free Peak has taken advantage of some of that reduced rate. I heard one ninety-nine to get up there to try to get people to do that.
As long as they can buy ice cream.
Yeah. And then, you know, then we're going to end up more VRBOs, you know, it's, there's a whole nother push we have to do by the law. But there's a good reason to get the one percent on the VRBOs too. And then get that registered. If they're not, we have a little bit of control of that. So, so I guess that's something to think about, more research for that. We got a little help with that.
With the occupancy tax, we got to consider that, that very thing there. Airbnbs, vacation rental hours.
Yeah.
Right. And that would be the detail of that one. So I guess the next point was, we have some time in some of the sense that we have. When they come back from session in September, we, we could apply for it again and likely get it. But we want to just really, let's bet that out here first. Trying to go there. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And then the former Parker School building, as we discussed, you know, I think that was a great communication period. Thank you, Ms. Solomon, for that. It was great of you to step up and help to take some of that. And I think it went really well. I felt like there was, you know, I think it cleared up a lot of the misnomers. I think there's still a lot of them out there. But I think a lot of that communication is doing there. So I guess, where, where do we want to go from here? As a group, where do we want to go from here?
I, you all got an email from one of my constituents that I haven't had a chance to respond to yet. But I, but I did email her and tell her that in this discussion I could bring up some of her points. Parker was the idea of the childcare agencies being in there, that died in September. So it hasn't been a full year. And so some people do feel like we're rushing and they feel like getting INHS in there is a foregone conclusion. And I am a big fan of that proposal. I really am. Because I think that if the neighborhood housing services, their number one goal is building community, fostering community. People are very concerned that there will be they're worried about the density issue that this is in the middle of an Arling district and that it's going to radically change the number of people who are living there. I understand that concern. There are a couple of different proposals that they have, wrong word, a couple of different schemas that they have for their proposal based on what the community wants. So they have said that they'd be willing to accommodate a childcare facility in the building. But for that to happen, they have to build on a little wing from the back. I think that's something people really want to see, the daycare, and they would add some more housing up above. But people are worried because there's a lot of blight around that neighborhood and there are some streets that are still preserved, such as Halbert, where this person lives that are still have that neighborhood feel where people know each other and there aren't a lot of rentals. And they're worried about light and they're worried about the kind of clientele that INHS would bring in. We had a lot of conversation about that. I have seen the presentation twice and I've known about this company for a long time. And one of the reasons why I like it is that I believe that they would have a variety of people in there. So it would not be just one demographic of our society in the building, that there would be some single parents and there would be some retirees and there would be some disabled people who would get out from the Racker Center. They've already made arrangements for that. There would be people, you know, young adults who are trying to make it, just wanting to be independent, just getting started. I think there could be young couples who are saving to buy a house. And so that's what I'm thinking. But I understand that it's frustrating to people that we only got this one proposal. And.
I'll tell you, after going through that meeting, and I apologize to cut you off, but my ward is going to have to have some assurances for me to vote yes on this because this is on the border of my ward. And they, it's been a huge outcry, very clear. We do not want low income housing. We do not want section eight. We do not want handouts. My ward is all for a hand up and so am I. If you're in trouble by circumstance, be more than happy to help you. If you live that way by choice and you're going to bring something bad to my neighborhood, I don't want you anywhere near it. And I believe by saying it that way, I speak for most of my ward. I, I think my ward is also upset that we have only had one proposal. But they're going to have to have reassurances for me to even think about voting yes on this because the majority of the people in my ward have said, we don't understand it. And I wanted them all at that meeting and they couldn't all make it.
Sure.
We don't like what we think it is. They couldn't make it, so they don't know exactly what it is. But I've looked at it, I've researched and I've gone online and I'm not sure I know exactly what it is. And to think that I thought leaving the meeting, it was going to be very transparent to get on their website and see exactly what they could do and the type of facilities they maintain. I wasn't sure that it jived with what they said. But again, I've only seen the presentation once, maybe I need to see it twice. And maybe my, the community I represent needs to see it twice. I feel like my neighbors, my neighborhood, my friends, the people I represent really want certain things to happen in that school. I think there was a lot of good that was said, but also a lot of things made me go this. Giant question mark. What did they mean? How will that affect us? How do you maintain it? Give me details. But honestly, we had too short of a meeting to dig into that. We also had some people stealing the floor, taking your time that were asking about things that didn't even pertain to that meeting. And I wish that hadn't happened. I think we could have got farther into it.
There's a, I'll just, if you, there's, there's a good educational pieces. We spend a lot of time with doc, with questions and answers that are on the website that are, they'll write at Parker School, or about Parker School, you get it on the homepage of the league. And there's a lot of answers that could answer a lot of the questions. And I encourage you to read those and I encourage them to read them. And if they find something that they don't, that's not on there, then ask it, send it to myself or you, you know, make sure it's Andy. We'll make sure it's to them and they'll respond to it and that will be what's posted on that website.
I just say to that, to the point, I do have, you know, questions that have come in and information available to add since this was published on Friday. And, you know, if you have questions or identify additional information that you would give that to me and we, we will update it and we will make notation as this goes along to different versions about what information is new from the last version so that people can follow it. But, you know, we, we want to provide answers.
Right. And I think that if, even though the RFP window has closed, I would like to posit that we as a body would be willing to entertain any strong proposal that came from the community that would be best, that would best serve the community. So if there's anybody out there who has a proposal for Parker, please give it to us. Because we don't want to have just one choice. We would prefer more choices. But we didn't solicit this choice. I happen to think it's a good one. As far as the low income aspect of it, anti, one of the questions was answered by INHS about how that's determined. The idea of the rentals would be that they would use, they would take no more than thirty percent of someone's income. And their income would have to meet a certain income guideline, but she said it could be as much as like, what, ninety percent? Yeah. And they have an onsite office. They vet everyone who comes in. They have evicted people before. It's rare because they're very careful about who they allow to rent.
There is a link within this document to their renters, their policy for making decisions, whether to approve an applicant line. I think that is what everyone looking at.
Yeah.
Now ultimately, I guess back to the overall conversation, I mean, we, we can get more information about that. We can do that.
Yeah.
Of course, you know, Parker School's been empty for several years now and we maintained to be several years, we maintained to be, you know, costs to taxpayers and, you know, those are all considerations that need to be there. And just because there's one proposal, which we did everything we could to get more and I've interacted and discussed with others and currently am as well, trying to do everything we can to try to give us as many options as we can. But without, we don't want to give up on that. But we also need to take action and it always doesn't necessarily appeal a hundred percent, but we need to do the best we can. This is all, this is not just Katie's ward and our, Mr. Scott's ward. This is our city. We all.
I mean, Mayor, I've, I've received a number of different constituent, you know, feedback around this and over and over again, I've heard that folks want a mixed use building where it could be different levels of income within that building, but also meaning mixed use of different services available in that building, similar to the setup that's on, on South Main Street. Where there are different services available to the residents and the community. And generally that, you know, the, the, the person that is disabled, they don't generally have a choice. And, and one of the. They don't generally have a choice, uh, and, and one of the stats that, that is out there is one third of us at some point in time. Come into a disability, uh, in our lifetime. And so, um, let's make that be clear, that sometimes there's no choice in how we even, we gotta live our life. And we, we all need help at some point in time, everyone here generally has had access to public school. Everybody's taking advantage of that.
I think I, go ahead, and I've spoken to Katie about this, um, when we had our initial meeting. Um, when it was just us, um, I remember them saying there will be no section eight. Rentals in that building. And now that's not true. And I believe that they said. That a manager would be onsite, like living onsite, you know. I don't remember that. That was ninety five, five days a week, but then they have an emergency number on the, yeah, all right, that's what they said, but. And I understand legally the whole section eight thing, but they said there would not be, and, and.
I think some of the criteria math would make it hard to that happen, but like, uh. Like Mr. Thompson's bringing up, that, if you're, if you're in, if you're disabled, you could very well qualify for eighty percent. And in that realm, so therefore they would be able to be in that realm. I think the problem is, I think there's people on section, section eight that give section eight a bad name. Right, and maybe you can, there's, there's many people that, you know, like, I think Mr. Scott referred it to. I, and I don't, you know, you don't want to throw the baby out with that boy, so to speak, but I think that's an important factor, but remember. Part of the proposal that we had is this doesn't comply with what we might do, suspected use permit, which is one of the discussions we had, it could be revoked. That's a big investment for somebody to do to, to not follow what we make clear those guidelines, so we can make. Whatever we didn't qualify to make sure it's not a nuisance property that's important. Because I think everybody's comparing to the building next door to us where it has become, my opinion, a nuisance property. And we spent a lot of time with buyer and lease over there, uh, which is. Would not be our intent, would not be the Halbert Street residents' intent, intent either, so I think that would be recognized.
The most important thing is that this be an enhancement to. That neighborhood in particular, to the whole city, certainly, it's like the center of the city. It needs to, the, the project that goes into Parker has to benefit the city. It has to enhance that neighborhood, it can't be people who drag it down, who populate the park. With, you know, unsavory characters, we don't want more of that, they've been seeing that as the building's been vacant. Um, but I think also that, I'll speak for myself, when I say section eight. I had a certain image and I was corrected at that meeting by people who work with people who are on section eight. And also, what I remember from our first conversation with INHS is that they said there wouldn't be anybody. Who is completely on government assistance, they would have to have some other income. But then at the meeting, they said, well, there could be people who are on disability. And don't have another source of income. So that's, that's the kind of clientele that they're talking about and they would have. Again, these are conversations they would want to have with the community, so if people wanted to see a gym in there. Like they have in the place on South Main, if they want a childcare in there, they said, well, if you put childcare in there. We couldn't run it ourselves because we're not in business of running a daycare, but we can build it and we can rent it at, um, below. Cost, so that it's affordable and so that the people who do provide childcare there can afford to pay their people more. I, I believe in the integrity of this company, that's why I'm behind it. But if there's, you know, the woman who wrote us the email, um. She's worried about light, she's worried about a huge increase in population. She's worried about not being able to evict people who are, um. Becoming a problem. She's worried that a handful of people are making a decision about this building. Thinks it's being brushed through. She'd like to see spaces to rent for people who are working remotely. Or movie nights or music events or dance recitals, there could be a big open space in there. Um, if they want to hear, if, if they get the go ahead, they want to hear from the community, what do you want to see? In this building, so I think that they would really work. With the, with the community, but if by all means, if there's somebody out there. Who wants to. Do something else for the betterment of the city of Portland. We just need something that will come through to fruition, we need something that has the financial backing, um.
Right, so with that said, I think, um, you know, with the Racker Center going downstairs was. Mr. Thompson, that was a good point, you know, that helps, that gives another justice to somebody being good people there, because there's always. They can't run a business if they don't own a business. So I guess the next flavor is, so, um, I think. To give it time, to make sure that has enough time, if we wanted to proceed, I'd like to do two public hearings, so they have plenty of opportunity to do that public hearing. Then there were also subsequent public hearing for as far as how the, uh, special use permit is going to work. And I spoke with, uh, Tricia planning today at the county and she assured me they're working on some kind of resolution for that, so. That would happen in between the next two meetings, two months, you know, because we got one meeting next month again, right? So then we'd have the next one in August, so we can get them moving, so. I guess I just want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity, we still have the opportunity to hear everybody, we have two times to hear. You can get, I'll get your questions, I encourage you to drive over there, walk around their facilities. See what it's about, see what their clientele's about, talk about the neighbors.
I think two hearings would be wonderful.
That's, that's the flavor of the group, then I will move it to the next meeting for a public hearing.
I think that's a great idea.
And it would be wonderful if, when, you know, when, so. It really comes to fruition, we could say. Soto is going to be running a childcare, you know, and that would, I think that would sell them, it would help.
And, you know, childcare is difficult, working today, I'm, I'm working again on it for the local business, the business that's going in the central. Park, the, oh, uh, rubber made factory, and they're looking to do daycare there, you know, to, to, you know. Licensing providers, uh, the Brady's, they're not paying enough. You know, uh, give the chamber the credit, you know, they're taking on initiative to try to get us, us to be a pilot program. To pay more, to try to get that to happen, because the Federals, and they were on the phones, because they, uh, different item, the chamber was there, but. Um, so we're trying to work on those kind of things to try to stimulate that idea and that concept to be that next level. I think that's where we all need to go, it's kind of sensible to take care of them before, but the, and they did offer this. Well, I was, did get them to agree to, they didn't utilize all the, imagine how many people would go to work tomorrow if they had that childcare as part of it. They had that free childcare was being part of their business, so that would be a great model for them, and then if they didn't, then they could offer to outside people after that. For it to fix P, and if it could help subsidize, so that our childcare providers didn't have to pay rent. Or pay the additional cost of renovating a building, be able to have that as their housing facility. Feeling they have to pay rent for the people that are outside their, their, that business. That would be a big plus, so, you know, those are the kind of ideas, those are the kind of things that now all of a sudden they're costing, now they can take that money and work towards ways. And maybe entice people, maybe they, the daycare provider that we have in our community that are not really excited about doing it, because it is a very difficult task. To be able to want to do that, so I think, you know, I think there's some good things happening all the way around, uh, you know, where it all lands, who knows, but let's hope that we keep working at it. And we, I think, honestly talking about it and talking about the concerns, and I appreciate everybody's honesty and willingness to talk about it in a respectful manner. I think that's an important factor that the, because it's a very, uh, high emotional issue, from the childcare to the building itself. Uh, we want to do, we all want it to be the best we can, uh, and that's why it's sometimes hard to even renovate your own home, right? So you try to, if I do this, I move my kitchen into my living room, my living room, you know, it's difficult, those are difficult decisions that we're all trying to make on a daily basis. This is even more complex and difficult, but inaction is worse than not making any action at some point. As long as we put our protections in, what we think their biggest concerns are, how can we pull that back, how would we control that? That's going to be the most important decisions for today, though. Yeah, so with that said, we'll put it at the public hearing on the next one, and I'll take a motion for adjournment.